Evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here tonight. I would like to call to order the City of San Carlos City Council's successor agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority regular meeting for May 9. I welcome everyone to our first in-person meeting. It is also hybrid, where members of the public have the option to observe the meeting and address the city council in person at our chambers here or remotely via Zoom. I am going to ask for some patience and grace tonight as we get used to this new system and my first time being mayor here. If you are attending this meeting in person and wish to provide a public comment, please fill out a speaker slip located in the back of the chambers over there and submit it to the city clerk, or you can raise your hand when I call for additional public comment. If you're participating remotely and wish to provide a public comment, please join this meeting through Zoom. To join online, go to zoom.com, click on "Join Meeting," and enter meeting ID 882-561-40939. If you'd like to join this meeting by phone, call into 1-669-900-6833 when prompted, enter the meeting ID number. This information is also available on the agenda. Once in the meeting, use the "Raise Hand" feature to notify us that you'd like to make a comment, and we'll call on you during the designated public comment portions of the meeting. Okay, so with that, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're on item three, changes to the order of the agenda. Does staff have any changes this evening?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any changes from my colleagues? Okay, great. So we will move on to presentations tonight. We have three proclamations to give out. The first will be recognizing May 2022 as Mental Health Month, and I will ask Susie Hughes from One Life Counseling and Sarah Larios Mitchell to join me down here in front of the stage. ...month, whereas mental health conditions are one of the most common health conditions worldwide, and the COVID-19 pandemic has triggered a 25% increase in the prevalence of anxiety and depression. And whereas last year, the U.S. Surgeon General issued a health advisory on the youth mental health crisis that has been further exposed by the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas one out of every 24 Californians with a serious mental health condition have difficulty functioning in everyday life, and if left untreated have life expectancies 25 years shorter than the general population. And whereas every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health and substance use conditions and may feel isolated and alone going years before receiving any help. And whereas mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions -- this is cutting out -- and people who have mental health and substance use conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas this year's May Mental Health Month theme, SMC Take Action for MH, encourages everyone to take actionable steps toward addressing mental health and substance use conditions with the overarching goal to support mental wellness. And whereas the City of San Carlos's mayor has joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, where mayors across the 20 cities in San Mateo County have come together with the mission of promoting awareness of and access to mental health resources in their communities. And whereas the San Carlos City Council wishes to increase the public's knowledge of the signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use conditions, and to promote the many professional and self-help resources and self-care practices available, including two great resources in our own community, One Life Counseling Center at Star Vista. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council hereby recognize May 2022 as Mental Health Month in the City of San Carlos to enhance public awareness of mental health, to help end the stigma, and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions dated this day, 9th day of May 2022. So I have a proclamation for each of you, and if you would like, I would love for you to stand here and talk a little bit, one minute or so, about your organizations and the great work that you do.
Well, thank you so much, Madam Mayor and the entire city council for your support. At Star Vista, we've been based here in San Carlos, I am so proud to say, for over 55 years. Our first program that started was the Suicide Prevention Hotline. It was actually one of the very first of its kind in the entire country, right in Burlingame, right here in San Mateo County. And since then, our organization has grown. We now have about 30 programs, and we serve about 40,000 people right here in San Mateo County alone. Many of our programs span from crisis intervention, youth residential programs. We work so much with early childhood and mental health services as well. We're in about 40 different schools throughout San Mateo County, and I will tell you, just as the mayor said, right now in our county, mental health is at a crisis point. We're seeing children from first grade all the way through high school experiencing mental health issues in a way that we've never seen before. Children experiencing eating disorders, anxiety, depression, suicidality, issues that in the past we just haven't seen before. And our agency in partnership with you and so many others, we're doing our very best to address those issues. I do want to thank all of you also, of course, for bringing mental health awareness to the forefront, to do your part to help de-stigmatize mental health issues and making it okay to reach out for help when we need it. So thank you so much on behalf of Star Vista. I want to thank you for your support and everything you're doing to support the local community. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Sarah, Mayor, and all the rest of you for supporting us. We are the little guy, she's the big guy. We're in San Carlos, One Life Counseling Center, and we do a lot of the private practice work that they don't do. So if somebody, whether they have resources or not, needs counseling services, we're here, we're available. We know that there's a lot of barriers to treatment, some of them being price, some of them being a little bit of pride, not feeling like you want to ask for help. There also can be, "I couldn't find the right fit," or "I can't find the person that's right for me." We're here to help guide you right through that, to get you the services that you need. And I want to thank all of you, and especially the mayor, for really investing in this. In San Carlos, we're going to have a healthier city, and it's stronger and more united. So I really appreciate this, and it means a lot to me. And One Life, thank you.
Crystal, is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do have one hand raised from a member of the public joining remotely. Gary Brigado, you should be able to unmute.
I do just want to remind the public that we're taking comment right now on the mental health proclamation part of our agenda. If you'd like to make a public comment on another item, we'd prefer for you to wait until that item is brought up on the agenda.
Thank you. Gary, if you are making a public comment on this item, you should be able to unmute right now.
No, I'm sorry. I was going to tune in till tomorrow. Oh, I muted shit.
Okay, well, if you want to speak on another item, then you can raise your hand.
Yeah, sorry.
No worries. Thank you. There are no other hands. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, do any of my colleagues have comments? Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank Star Vista, Susie, and Sarah, and One Life Counseling for all the work that they do on behalf of the community. I also want to thank the mayor for all her leadership around this important issue. And I know many of you got the booklets that came in the mail, and I just wanted to say, we received tons of really positive comments about the quality, the resources that are in there. And I want to thank Nile and Brian and her team for all the work that they've done with that, working with the mayor. Really is a great effort by the community, and it's great to have and be able to celebrate this in San Carlos and be moving forward in a positive way on this. So, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mayor McDowell for bringing this forward, as well as staff for all your hard work, and to One Life Counseling, Susie Hughes, and Sarah from Star Vista. Mental health has long been stigmatized, and taboo is something to talk about, and I'm really pleased to see our community step forward and really be willing to have a conversation about it, because that's really the best way for people to get help. And this effort, I think, will improve lives and save lives, so I'm really grateful.
Thanks, Laura. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add my congratulations and let you know that we're grateful that you're in our community. And I would also like to say that I wish you'd been around or we had known about you about 20 years ago, because my family could have used your services. So, thank you again.
Thanks, Ron. I too want to just take a moment to acknowledge how much work our staff has spent on this issue, and it's been just so incredibly rewarding, and our community thanks you. Like Adam, I've heard so much wonderful feedback. I do want to let the community know that on cityofsancarlos.org/mentalhealth, you can find a copy of the brochure that was mailed out to the community, and some wonderful resources, and a calendar of events, and we have a lot going on to recognize Mental Health Month. So, thank you again to our city staff for working on this issue. Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to our next proclamation, declaring May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I would love for Ming and Becky Tsai, longtime San Carlos residents and active participants at the ACC, to come on up and join me at the podium. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. I would like to read the proclamation to you now, and then I'll give you a few moments to talk at the podium if you would like, okay? So, "Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders have a long and rich history, heritage of shaping the history of the United States and are instrumental in the future success of our nation. And whereas the month of May was designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander, AAPI, Heritage Month, to commemorate the arrival of the first Japanese immigrant to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. The majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas celebrating AAPI Heritage Month raises awareness of the vital contributions of the AAPI community and honors the many AAPI leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas one of the City of San Carlos's core values is to be a safe, diverse, welcoming, and engaged community, we thereby condemn the acts of hate, violence, and aggression toward any and all persons and stand in solidarity with the AAPI community. And whereas the City of San Carlos is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city of good living. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council hereby declare the month of May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and urge our residents to join together to learn more about the AAPI community's heritage and celebrate their contributions to our country." Thank you so much. This is for you. Thank you, Becky. Would you like to say a few words? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Becky Tsai, and my husband, Ming Tsai. We are so honored to be invited to here, to join to a convention on behalf of Chinese, Chinese-American, and people, Pacific island, Pacific Islander of San Carlos. We moved to San Carlos 41 years, 41 years ago. We love this city of good living. We raised two wonderful boys. They went to Aranda Elementary School, Central Middle School, and Coma High School. And this San Carlos is like a paradise to us. We thank you so much, and we are honored to be here. Thank you.
Crystal, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, there are no hands raised.
Okay, any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yeah, I want to just thank Mayor McDowell for recognizing AAPI Month, and thank Ming and Becky Tsai for being such a wonderful part of our community for 41 years, and I'm glad to hear that San Carlos has been good to you and you've been able to raise a family. So, thank you for being a part of the community.
Well said. Vice Mayor Ruck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to also join in and say thank you for this proclamation, and thank you to Ming and Becky for being here and for representing the Asian American Pacific Islander community, and I'm glad that we're able to celebrate this month and honor you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Okay, seeing no other comments, we will move on to our third and final proclamation of the evening, which is recognizing National Public Works Week, and our Public Works Director, Stephen Machida, is going to join me. Hey, Stephen. I'm going to read the proclamation to you, too. I think it's really important to recognize the work of our Public Works Department, because they are there for our city in thick and thin during storms and power outages and other disasters, and they show up and really do the good work in our city. So, this is National Public Works Week: Ready and Resilient. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the City of San Carlos. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our community. And whereas San Carlos's Public Works professionals are unsung heroes, because they do their jobs so well that they are generally unrecognized by the public at large. And whereas it is in the public interest for our civic leaders and community to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, to recognize the dedicated employees who safeguard our public infrastructure. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire city council, hereby recognize May 2022 as Mental Health Month be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of San Carlos, and urge our community to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life in the city of good living, presented this ninth day of May 2022. Thank you, Stephen. Would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. On behalf of all the Public Works staff, certainly, and all the engineers out there, we thank you for recognizing May 15 through the 21st as Public Works Week. Thank you.
Crystal, is there any public comment?
I am not seeing any from members at home.
Okay. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to say that public works in many ways can be a thankless job. And I'm glad we can pause this week. And thank you, Stephen, and your team for all the good work and the good place you keep us here in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to add my thanks to Stephen, not only for the work that you and your department do, but the way you respond to citizen concerns. When I get emails, I forward them to you. You're always very professional and helpful, and you make us all look good. So, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Thank you. And I just want to lend my gratitude to the discussion as well. Stephen, Ready and Resilient, I think perfectly embodies what you and your team are all about. And what you do is instrumental to the health and safety of our community. And I really appreciate the team and your dedication to that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Beck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we're all just happy to be pushing the button, be back here in person. But no. Stephen, I just want to thank you and your team for really the great work that you do. I would, I think last week I texted you on a Friday or midday, and like within 15 minutes, you got back to me with the answer I needed. And I know you're as responsive to the public as well. And I know over the last couple of years with the pandemic, the work that's been done around downtown, and it was just really phenomenal and really appreciated by all of us, I know, and the whole community. So, thank you.
Accolades all around for Stephen and his team. Thank you. Okay, no other comments. So, we will move on to item five, Council Communications and Announcements. Council Communications and Announcements are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. Any announcements from my colleagues this evening? Okay, well, I have an announcement. I will make it brief. Tomorrow, May 10, is National Fentanyl Awareness Day. And I think it's really important that we recognize this. This is really important to increase awareness of this issue in our community. On May 4, I attended a fentanyl awareness event hosted by San Carlos residents Liz and Rob Walker, who lost their teenage son Colin to fentanyl poisoning in August. Over 400 people attended, including many local high school students. Their foundation, the Colin Walker Memorial Foundation, partnered with nonprofit organizations, Song for Charlie, and One Life Counseling, to raise awareness about this deadly epidemic. The presentation was one of the most educational things I have seen in several years. So, I would encourage everyone with a child in their lives to watch it, and especially watch it with your teenager. We are in different times now than any of us sitting up here have grown up in. So, I think it's very important for us to educate ourselves about this epidemic. The presentation can be found on YouTube by Googling "They Didn't Ask for Fentanyl, May 4, 2022." So, tomorrow, May 10, is National Fentanyl Awareness Day. I would encourage everyone to watch that recording, and I would welcome any city efforts to help get the word out about that tomorrow. Okay. I don't see any other announcements, so we are going to move on to item six, Public Comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Please note that each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. But the City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future City Council agenda. So, if you are participating by Zoom, the instructions are on the screen. You may go ahead and raise your hand now. Crystal, is anyone waiting to make public comment this evening?
I have not received any public comment slips from members of the public in the chambers. So, if you have a public comment you'd like to make now, would be a good time to raise your hand and approach the podium. Okay, seeing none, we do have one member at home who would like to make a public comment. Sonia Elts.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. And I want to echo a thank you to our Public Works Department for a lot of outstanding work that they do. Grace and Stephen and enormous team, hearing new names and seeing new email, people involved in things that are important to our community. And I'm grateful we have such a strong team. Also, thank you for the mental health awareness. Sarah, for mayor, for asking the city to recognize tomorrow and do something, perhaps maybe on next door, something posted, spreading the word. I think that's really a great idea. Wanted to, on behalf of San Carlos Bikes, trying to promote active transportation in San Carlos. And I just want to make sure that the public knows that May 16, at 6:30 p.m., that's the Monday, is the Holly Street Pedestrian Overpass meeting to, with one of the consultants working with the city, to get that ball rolling, so that we have a way to connect the, across Highway 101 to San Carlos. The other thing is Hometown Days, we're very excited about for Bikes and Wheels. We're going, the San Carlos Bikes is hosting a Bikes and Wheels parking wagon, strollers, bikes, scooters, whatever people can bring and ride on, preferably because traffic, sorry, parking is so limited. At Hometown Days, we will have that in the bocce court. Also, there's a pre-parade roll for any, anybody of any age who wants to ride down Laurel Street just ahead of the parade, meet at the corner of San Carlos Avenue and Laurel at 9:30 a.m. on Saturday morning of Hometown Days weekend. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. Any other public comment, Crystal?
There are no other hands.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to the consent calendar. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Beck.
Madam Mayor, don't wish to pull one, but I'm going to recuse myself from item 7D, as my street and block is one of those being paved.
Okay, noted. Any other items from my colleagues? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through F and Item G, adopting Ordinance Number 1580, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 18.18, landscaping, replacing Section 18.18.070, trees, and Chapter 18.41, terms and definitions.
Second.
Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Beck, excuse me.
Yes, with the exception of 7D.
Noted. And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Crystal. We will now move on to item 8A, Study Session, Discuss and Provide Direction on the Potential Partial Street Closures of McHugh Avenue, Montgomery Street, Cherry Street, and Hall Street in the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood, led off by Stephen Machida, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. City Councilmember Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. So, what's before you tonight is actually conducting a study session, and rightly tried to receive some direction from council in regards to the partial closures for the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood. So, just give some really quick background information. Basically, the Greater East San Carlos, or GESE, is concerned about the increased speeding, compliance with traffic sales, and cut-through traffic. So, according to the GESE, prior traffic economy measures actually had been unsuccessful. Namely, these were mostly bulbouts along these streets near industrial. The GESE, therefore, would kind of request partial closures of McHugh, Montgomery, Cherry, and Hall Streets via barricades. So, this item went before the Transportation and Circulation Commission twice. The first time, they actually wanted the neighborhood group to actually submit a petition or go through the NTMP or Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan, to actually really kind of allow staff kind of evaluate specifically what the neighborhood is requesting. And the neighborhood group did that. They were very successful to submit their application. And on the second meeting, and this is where we had talked about kind of the barricades and type of improvements that they wanted to include, of which it really was kind of the barricades. However, we also had both police chief and fire chief there. And the fire chief really felt it was having barricades, the orange barricades that you see in the downtown, was really unacceptable. Their concern was it would affect kind of their hose pool or kind of safety emergency response. However, they looked at kind of the mountable curbs instead of the K-rail, and that would provide a little bit better access to the hose, hose, hose pool, as well as kind of staging their fire engines, you know, on the block. So, with that in mind, the TNC Commission recommended that the GESE, the partial street closure proposal, actually be brought to council for consideration. So, this photo really kind of depicts what specifically the neighborhood group really wants. So, as you can see, you have to the angle, you see Old County and Industrial on either end, Holly with north and Branson to the south. So, basically, what the neighborhood group, they wanted to prevent access from Old County into McHugh, Montgomery, Cherry, and Hall. At the same time, they also wanted to prevent access from industrial into the same streets, Hall, Cherry, Montgomery, and actually McHugh. But McHugh actually kind of in the north end, actually enters into the street from San Carlos, East San Carlos Avenue. So, you may ask, well, how do the residents on these streets actually access their homes? So, the intent of the proposal was actually to have the cars or the residents access either East San Carlos from industrial or Old County, or Terminal, again, from industrial at Old County, or Tanklage at industrial. And then ultimately use Bayport Avenue as the major spine to access their, these respective streets, so Hall, Cherry, Montgomery, and McHugh. Now, when the residence wishes to leave their residence, their homes, they would be allowed to exit out of their street onto the respective industrial or Old County in either direction, north or south. So, this is kind of the original kind of layout that we actually had. And I just wanted to show it, show you this picture in particular, because I wanted to show you where the hydrant. So, basically, as you can see, the barriers are in the, kind of, in this case, the east direction. And as the fire chief kind of pointed out, this really prohibited any kind of hose pool from the hydrant. They were located in the corner. And then the barriers also provided a, kind of a barrier or an obstruction for their fire engine setup. And so, really, this was never really considered to be moved, moving forward. So, I'll show you in a minute. Well, actually, I'll just show it now. So, this is the, this is the, kind of the, what was really kind of cited, where basically we would have kind of a mountable curbs, where we actually block the direction into the street. And instead of, in this case, rubber, or excuse me, in this case, concrete curbs, you would actually have a multiple rubber curbs, which would allow emergency vehicles access into, or they would run over these multiple curbs when they needed to in response to the emergency. I just wanted to point out, so I did meet with the residents on March 3, and actually rather than kind of using these type of barricades or closures, I suggested that we look at other type of improvements, such as additional signage, curb, curb bulbouts or curb extensions. And I'd even consider installing like speedhumps. But these particular improvements were really not accepted by them. So, before actually taking this item or bringing this item before City Council, what I really wanted to do was really understand, you know, what would actually happen if, in fact, we did put these partial closures in place. So, one of the first things I wanted to do was to talk to Recology. So, as you can see, you know, basically what Recology, after having that discussion with them, Recology felt that this would be, it's something that they could do. However, it does offer some challenges. One is their drivers, you know, they're trained and instructed to avoid any type of backout movement. With the kind of the layout that the neighbor had, neighbor had requested, where you would not allow any traffic going in from Old County or industrial, there is at least one movement where their garbage truck would have to do a fairly lengthy backout movement. And whenever you back up any kind of large truck, whether it's a garbage truck or vectors, any kind of length of backing out, you know, can cause safety concerns, because there are a lot of blind spots in the back. Additionally, the truck collection arms, so these are the arms that you may see when you have your garbage or recycle organic, they're on the right side of the truck. And it's usually a one-person driver. So, as they go on the street, they collect one side. But if the opposite side is on the closed end or closed lane, you know, how would they go about in collecting, you know, those cans on the street? So, they could certainly go out, or they would have to make another pass, but back all the way down, down the street. So, this is another kind of challenge for them, you know. So, at least there is a backup, a required backup maneuver. And then Recology also pointed out to me that they use three different trucks for collection. You have one truck for garbage, one truck for recycled, and one truck for organics. So, depending upon how often and how they route the truck, you could actually have 12 truck passes going by any particular house during the collection day. And with that, you could also have possibly the backup alarm sounding for a given period of time during that time they have their collections. So, the other thing I wanted to really kind of mention is, I know the neighbors had acts, you know, that perhaps instead of having the garbage truck observe kind of the road closure or partial road closure, you know, what if we in fact do exempt the trucks from entering, or allowing the trucks enter, so they would not actually have to obey the road closures? You know, that, that is something that the neighbors would agree on. But this is something that I wanted to have a little bit more discussion with the chief, as well as Recology. From my understanding, vehicle code does not allow, you know, actually drivers driving on the wrong side of the street, except for emergency vehicles. Additionally, I had some discussion with Recology today in regards to, you know, would they allow their truck drivers to drive on the wrong side of the street? You know, basically, the answer was no. I mean, I think for any large service provider, transit, buses, you know, garbage trucks, you know, they have specific requirements that they require all their drivers to obey or comply with. And driving on the wrong side of the street is not really allowed. Furthermore, it was pointed out to me, all the garbage truck drivers actually have a Class B license, which is a little bit higher than, you know, the license that I have. Basically, it's considered a professional driver. And so, actually, any type of moving violation is a little bit more serious, because they are considered professional drivers. And it is something that usually anybody who has a Class A, Class A or Class B license, you know, really pays very close attention on how they drive. And so, they want to be very honest. And so, it is one of those concerns, that even though Recology may allow them to drive on the wrong side of the street, is that something that the driver would be willing to do? Again, that is part of his livelihood. So, the other service that I wanted to verify is the US Postal Service. So, in this case, I did have the opportunity to speak to the local postmaster. And what she was indicating that, you know, probably there's not a lot of change from, if in fact there was a partial closure. However, she really believes that it would extend the length that the merry carrier would be out in the field. You know, she, this is kind of her gut reaction. She didn't do any modeling, but it is something that she really felt. But how the merry mail carriers deliver the mail in this neighborhood is pretty much they park on Bayport, and they hand-deliver all the mail via satchel. And then any packages that they might have, they would actually go back to the truck, sort that, and then sort that, and then from using their truck, they would actually go to the respective house to deliver those packages. Again, they would have to probably reroute, you know, through various of the closures if need be. So this slide actually shows just some really preliminary data that we were able to obtain from a cut-through traffic study that were actually is currently ongoing or underway. And so the data results are still preliminary. However, basically using the kind of pre-COVID data, approximately 0.8% of trips are actually cut through in this neighborhood. And you can see the diverse percentage from McHugh is 0.2%, Montgomery 0.3%, Cherry Street 0.1%, and Hall Street 0.2%. You know, what this amounts to is perhaps, you know, 12 to 15 additional trips. So there is cut-through traffic. You know, I can't say there's not, but there is some cut-through traffic. But what that amounts to is it could be one to two vehicles additional, you know, every 12 hours. As I mentioned, this is still preliminary. We're still assessing, you know, the count itself. And the volume counts are currently being underway. So I'm showing you this slide, you know, with the highlighted streets. So basically, with the partial closures, more trips will be occurring on the highlighted yellow streets. So East San Carlos, Bayport Avenue, Terminal Way, and Tanklage. Again, this is for the residents who need to access their streets off Industrial or Old County. But as a result of actually using Bayport as the major spine, it really becomes somewhat of a quasi-collector street, which is required to handle more traffic. You know, currently, it is identified, or for that matter, all these streets are considered local streets. But as a result of actually focusing more of the traffic to utilize Bayport, you know, it really starting to look more as a quasi-collector street. Now, this, this is something else I just wanted to bring up just for your information. So along Old County, so at McHugh, Montgomery, Cherry, and actually not so much at Hall, but there is a spot that looks like could be a commercial business. All these, this address on Old County, it's about one lot deep of non-residential. So if in fact we were to put these partial closures, we would actually have to set back, you know, approximately one lot depth or at least where the residential streets, or excuse me, residential lots are from the commercial. Many of these commercial buildings have back driveways. They have driveways in the back or access areas where they need to get to. So as you can see here, this is a picture of Cherry Street. And here, we would have to kind of set it back, you know, right almost at the driveway of the commercial. This is kind of the lower portion of the street. And then as you can see, we also would probably have to red curb a little bit across the way. Again, just to provide a little bit better clearance for any vehicles that actually come driving the correct direction or the right-hand side. Because if there were cars parked, it might be more of a pinch point for cars to get through. So looking a little bit more deeply into the traffic, public traffic as it is. So as I mentioned earlier, the preliminary data indicates that the cut-through traffic is still pretty low, you know. But the study is ongoing, so we don't have all the final results yet. But at the current moment, we believe that physical barriers or any kind of improvements is really kind of premature. You know, we would like to suggest, you know, actually allowing us to complete the study and get a better assessment of how to move forward. That being said, if, if the closures would occur, you know, certainly, and the police chief is here, and, you know, she may have some additional comments. But the closures will become an enforcement challenge. And mainly because once you put any type of closure in, and if somebody does not comply with that closure, you know, the expectation is there'd be a citation or at least a warning given to, you know, the culprit. With these type of partial closures, you know, these are not very common. You know, they are around, but they aren't very common. So will there be driver confusion as well as with the partial closures? You know, will vehicles and bicyclists, will they know how to behave? Again, you have a single pinch point where vehicles and bicycles, you know, may be. And then further, what may complicate it, if you do have trucks, garbage trucks, who actually go in the wrong direction, what happens if they go face-to-face? Will, you know, the garbage truck driver know what to do? Will the other vehicle know what to do? Or for that matter, the bicyclist know what to do? You know, will somebody panic and cause a safety or a vehicle collision? As I mentioned earlier, garbage trucks will need to circulate or reroute multiple times. And because of this rerouting, there will be kind of increased gas emissions. For that matter, not only garbage truck, but for all vehicles kind of utilizing the local streets. We'll also increase trips on the surrounding, on the surrounding area due to the closures. As I mentioned earlier, if garbage trucks are required to back up, they are required by state law to have backup alarms. And so, you know, they'll be sounding. They are quite loud. You know, I briefly talk on the setback of the closures on Old County. Also, perhaps we're to do some of the street parking for the local residents. The street sweepers also very similar to garbage trucks. You know, can they make that three-point turn around the closure area? And then ultimately, it could increase emergency response time. And then lastly, it will set a precedent for establishing closures in other neighborhoods. So in conclusion, you know, the preliminary traffic data is still kind of being worked on. You know, I don't have all the information just yet. However, what would I do have, it appears that the cut-through traffic is still pretty low. So I believe it really is premature to actually implement any of these requested changes at this time. However, you know, certainly I would agree that we would need to continue to update and monitor the cut-through traffic over time. And then lastly, you know, I just wanted to throw one more thing out there. You know, if the closures were to proceed, I guess, you know, from a staff's perspective, what would be the outcome, you know, if other neighborhoods want something similar? You know, how would we go about this? You know, what is the precedent and what is the policy that we're going to be setting if we add these closures in? So with that, that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Stephen, for that thorough presentation. It looks like we have the first question from Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Stephen. A very thorough report, and you put a lot of homework in behind that. I appreciate that. And I do note that the cut-through traffic does seem to be quite low right now. But as we know, there is a lot of development coming to the east side. You know, this neighborhood is probably rightfully concerned about how that will impact them. And so my question is, how will you, specifically, how will your department monitor that cut-through traffic over the next five to 10 years?
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is kind of look at specifically, you know, the current study that we have. We just need to complete that, really get a better handle on it. But certainly, as a result of a lot of the development that would go on the way, we'd probably make that as condition of actually to evaluate cut-through traffic along with any traffic demand management requirements that we would place on any new development that would be going in there. Again, traffic management would actually look at programs to actually reduce some of the single-car trips into their respective. So I think, you know, we had talked about, you know, whether it's bus passes or train passes or bike mobility, bike share, that type of thing. So it'd be kind of an ongoing thing, but it is certainly something that, you know, we would want to monitor and, you know, work with the neighborhood to kind of look at, you know, the cut-through.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I do hope we continue to monitor that. And then, so say seven, eight years from now, there is significant cut-through traffic. You know, we've heard what the residents think would solve it. But what, what do you think, you know, is that a problem to have significant cut-through traffic where none existed before? Would you, would your department naturally have mediation that you'd recommend in that case?
Well, you know, I think maybe it might be multi-fold in there. I think earlier I referenced, you know, do the T V M Model Four kind of new developments. And certainly, there are programs that could be implemented that will need to be monitored to ensure that they are complying. In other words, they are meeting their goal for the number of trips that they're generating to kind of keep it low. But also to have these physical barriers that, you know, some of the residents or the neighborhoods have been asking for, you know, we could look at a little bit closely. I think at the current time, we just believe that it's a little premature to actually implement anything now because we really don't have any metric to measure against.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Vice Mayor Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Stephen, thanks for the thorough presentation and the data to date. I guess one question, do you have a sense, or are you looking at from the data kind of where, you know, you've got, you've talked about sort of Bayport and others being kind of connector roads and sort of would see, imagine increased traffic on East San Carlos Avenue and others. Do you have a sense of kind of where, what the impact would be on those streets? I mean, how many more cars we're thinking about?
You know, that is a difficult question, and that is something I've already proposed or posed to our traffic consultant. So he doesn't really have an answer, so I'm not sure I could really share anything. But it is something that, you know, certainly we are concerned about because I would like to know that, you know, what kind of impact.
It seems like a really important data point because, as we know, we've talked about, I think there's a meeting coming up on the bike path potentially on, and as I understand it, East San Carlos Avenue is kind of the route that you would, one of the bike routes to go to get to that bike path across 101. And I also already think that road is pretty tight to start with, the way the bulbout, the way that road is constructed. So if we're talking about significant traffic going to East San Carlos Avenue and we're trying to push more bikes over there, that just seems kind of problematic for my, without having the data to try to make a good, good decision point on that. And then secondarily, do you, I mean, were there other solutions sort of presented? Are there things that the greater east side community has sort of, would consider? I mean, essentially, I know that it's, the garbage trucks becomes a problem if you were to suggest sort of one-way streets because you're still, you're not really solving that problem with that. But were there, I know you mentioned a little bit about some of the raised curbs as an option. Was there anything that seemed to be something that should be evaluated that we didn't look at?
So when I met with the neighborhood group, and this was in March, you know, I did propose, you know, some of the things. One is the curb extension, certainly, that, you know. One of the things that were, however, I was proposing is it would still allow, you know, the traffic in both directions. And so as I mentioned, it was kind of the curb extensions or bulbouts, some additional signs where we would actually prohibit certain left turns or right turns on specific hours. And as I mentioned, there would possibly be even like speed humps if that kind of made sense. But after proposing that, that wasn't kind of the direction that the neighborhood group had really felt they could support.
So we could look at potentially even like, to your point, something that restricted certain turning at certain hours, potentially sort of during high-traffic hours. To say, okay, seven to nine or four to six, you couldn't make a left-hand turn on, you know, on McHugh or something, as an example.
That is correct. And I also believe I shared with that, you know, certainly when you do have these regulatory signs, that's when you're able to contact the ways and Google Maps or, you know, Google and let them know that, you know, we do have a regulatory or, you know, prohibition on terms.
So people wouldn't get redirected to that if that were the case?
Exactly.
That's an interesting point. Okay. Thank you. That's, I learned something new. Thank you.
Good questions. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the report. So I think with the commercial development, we're expecting, what, 6,000 to 10,000 potential new workers coming into the community. Where do things stand with respect to the overall traffic circulation study in this particular area? And I think kind of building on the question that Vice Mayor Rack had around, you know, other traffic mitigation potential programs. So for example, I know we've talked about investing in the bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Some employers are required or the property owners to have a transportation demand management plan. Could you talk a little bit about where we are on that end and with respect to this development that's coming over to the east side?
I may need to refer that over to Al. Al, are you able to field this question?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. So with regard to transportation demand management, each of the projects that has to go to the planning commission and/or the city council, most of them, if not all of them, are going to have to have their own transportation demand management programs. So that would include things like trying to reduce trip generation, onsite gyms, other things to keep people on campus, and also using public transportation. So each of those will have it. Also, we do have an ordinance for the city that outlays the different types of things we'll be looking for from those businesses, and we'll be updating that as well.
Thanks, Al. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Stephen. Great presentation and very thorough too. And I appreciate the fact that you've reached out to all the utilities and public safety entities. That's very important for us. I just have a couple of questions. The first one is, is Bayport any wider than the other streets in that neighborhood?
No, it is not. It's, you know, pretty much a local street, so that, it's intended to carry, you know, local traffic.
And do we have any idea of how the Bayport residents feel about the potential of increased traffic on their street?
So unfortunately, we did not make contact. But what I did, you know, I actually counted, you know, approximately, I believe there's probably eight to 10 houses that take direct access off of Bayport. And then if there are other houses that actually their addresses are on either Montgomery or Cherry, but they do have garages that access off of Bayport. But to answer your question, no, I did not kind of contact these residents affected.
Just wondering, it might be valuable to have their input because, you know, the character of their street may change if this is all implemented. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Stephen before we open it up to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up to public comment now. If you're participating remotely and would like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. And members of the public are welcome to comment as well. Crystal, is anyone waiting to make a public comment? Oh, Crystal, I think we have a presentation. Are we going to start with that? Okay. Okay. Is Dmitry on the line?
Yes, I do see Dmitry's hand up. Dmitry, you should be able to unmute if you'd like to. Are you ready to make your presentation?
Sure.
Okay. So I am going to present the item. You should be able to see it momentarily, and you'll just need to prompt me on when you want to proceed.
Sounds good.
Proceed the slides. Are you able to see that?
I don't see any slides yet.
Let me know when.
Here we go.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent. Oh, and then it went away. And now there's a blank screen.
Yeah, I believe our.
There it is. Okay. Gee, it keeps disappearing.
Let me check with our A V prompter. It should be up right now. Do you see that?
It is up right now, yeah. And then, and then it.
And now it's back off.
Yeah, and now it's back off.
Okay. Oh, okay. Let me see if this would work. Okay, do you see it right now?
I do.
Okay, can you, let me progress?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yes. That's awesome. No need to go back to the, to the first slide. So I wanted to present a little bit of history of the neighborhood and to provide some context, especially to some of Mr. Machida's comments. So the mitigation efforts that we've seen, gee, hold on one second.
Dmitry, do you want to identify yourself too and just say the organization you're speaking with?
My name's Dmitry Vandellus. I'm president of the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association. I'm the president of the Greater East St. Carlos Neighborhood Association. And I asked to be able to provide some context and present a slide deck today. So I just want to provide some quick history that in the previous mitigation efforts that the community has asked for, they all were about slowing traffic and not reducing traffic. Way back when, cities suggested speed bumps. And at that point in time, the city proposed that the residents paid 20 grand per street. But the issue is that speed bumps don't address the issue of cut-through traffic. Next slide, please. And other previous efforts, just getting stop signs in our neighborhood was somewhere between 10 and 20 years it took. And we did not get help from the city on this and it took quite a while. The community members realized that when they looked at the California deal called that the intersections actually were required to be controlled. And that was the only way we could get the stop signs. And then on top of that, the stop sign direction from a previous Public Work Director were proposed to be along the wrong, the wrong direction, which would have encouraged speeding on our local streets of McQ, Cherry, Montgomery and Hall. So again, we had to petition city hall to have the stop signs installed. Next slide, please. Regarding traffic studies, there was a traffic study done in 2009. And the, for each of the streets, and some of the streets were actually over the limits of eight, of 1,200 vehicles per day. But the thing that was very interesting is the Federal Highway Administration at that time said average daily traffic is normal on residential streets is between 80 and 700 vehicles per day. But the city set a limit of 1,200 vehicles per day and said that traffic is not high. So when you change the goalposts, you can kind of make your data present itself in the way you want. So the residents in our community do see, have seen increased traffic levels and are very concerned about the safety of our neighborhood. Next slide, please. Meridian 25, which is now Alexandria's, both those two buildings, there was also a traffic study, but they didn't look at any of the impacts of those cars driving through our streets. And there were no mitigations planned for our community, which was something that we had worked with that developer, but that city council at that time took that away. Next slide, please. So many, many residents participated in the east side visioning plan. And reducing congestion was one of the 10 big moves that's articulated in the side vision plan. Next slide. I'm not going to read through all this, but each of these bullet points are from the east side vision plan, the final plan. There are 1.7 million square feet of new development. It's probably much higher than that right now. And you can see in that last bullet point that the real issue or one of the main goals here was to work together to achieve broader citywide goals around traffic mitigation, open space creation, et cetera, et cetera. Let's move on to the next slide. So again, bullet points from the east side vision plan document. Better transitions between industrial and residential, minimize vehicle traffic on surrounding streets, prioritize the reduction of freight and cut-through traffic in residential neighborhoods to the north, which is our neighborhood, and explore the implementation through pilot programs of local access and slow street management programs. This is all a result of the outcomes of the east side visioning programs. Next slide. And that is a city document. So what we're asking for are these street closures signs. And our intent, there's a lot of talk about garbage trucks needing a backup and all sorts of problems with the vehicles. When we showed the, this design to the police and fire chief, they said that this is something that they could work with. When Mr. Machida showed the types of barriers before, they were highly problematic. So it looked like we had, we had gained acceptance on a barrier of this, which is, happens to be part of the city's neighborhood traffic management plan on page 33. So everyone could take a look at that and see that this is what the city itself recommends. And our plan was always to allow emergency vehicles and trash pickup. So this idea of needing to go in reverse really is kind of a nonsensical point because the roads are so narrow that when the truck is going down the street or even when a car is going down the street, other cars have to move out of the way to give them access. So the whole idea of needing a backup and those points seem a little far-fetched to me. Next slide, please. So we went through this entire process of phase one, phase two. And Mr. Machida said that we weren't interested in these other things. It's because we have gone through this process about speed bumps and all of the other sort of phase one, phase two types of traffic mitigations. None of those address cutting traffic and keeping the neighborhood traffic as neighborhood traffic. So I just wanted to articulate that the neighborhood did its due diligence, went through, gathered a majority of signatures on the documents that were requested. And we talked a lot with quite a few of the neighbors who signed, who signed the petition. Next slide, please. Regarding precedent, next slide. A lot of these insurmountable issues that in the staff report seem to have been overcome in downtown. Next slide. You can see these, what we're requesting is a partial street closure. These are full street closures. Next slide. Next slide. Anyone who walks downtown can see that those are full street closures. Somehow, police and fire have managed to deal with that. Next slide. In addition, Chestnut Street has a full street closure. Next slide. Bayport Court has a full closure. That's within our neighborhood. Next slide. McQ does as well. Next slide. The entire neighborhood, North Apollo Street, is closed off on the industrial side. In addition, Crestview Hallmark has a full street closure. There's some significant issues there, if you're talking about fire dangers and the lack of ingress and egress, if you're going to try to escape from a fire. But let's not talk about that. Next slide. So here's an overview of the area. And what I wanted to point out and what seems to be missing in some of the discussion that I heard earlier, what we're trying to do is have neighborhood traffic. So when people are talking about that there's going to be increased traffic, it is only neighborhood traffic. Currently, if you live on McQ Street, instead of going down McQ, you would go down East St. Carlos, East St. Carlos's businesses. So you're not impacting residents. So you're only going to impact the home that's on the corner of McQ, which would have gotten that traffic anyway if a car went down McQ Street to their house. So the idea that there's going to be some, some huge increase on Bayport Court really doesn't pan out because you can see that there are not a lot of blocks here. And if you go down East St. Carlos, you go to McQ or Bayport Court, no, no impact. If you go down Terminal, there are two blocks. So that's a total of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight houses total, which would be getting that traffic if the resident was coming in on, on the street that they resided on. So there really is no net difference. And what's important for folks to realize is we're talking about the local neighborhood traffic. So, and what we're trying to do is decrease traffic. And somehow that discussion is turning into this is going to create all sorts of new and extra traffic. And that simply isn't the case if you really look at the layout of the streets. Next slide, please. I also wanted to articulate that there's some eight to 12, I forget how many. I'm sure other folks would know exactly developments that are going on. And this is an unprecedented level of development. We're talking about tens of thousands of new jobs. And as a community, we are the ones who are going to be the most affected by it. We had these discussions in the east side visioning meetings, which is why those bullet points had been formed and articulated to talk about cutting, reducing cut-through traffic and figuring out traffic mitigations. So we went through this discussion already and it's not as if this is a brand-new thing and, you know, this had been vetted in a, in a very serious way. But the other thing I wanted to point out was, you know, the Alexandria campus is huge. They've also bought another parcel, which you can see in that small blue box. But then right adjacent to that is also another Alexandria campus. And then there's another eight to 10 more developments that are all along this area. And when we talk about traffic studies, one of the things that I find very curious is there's a lot of concern about the mail carrier or the police and fire entering the streets when they actually can enter it with the proposed solution that we have. Yet, when we're talking about on the proposed properties, there's a commercial property in the hotel, those are immediately adjacent to a major intersection and they only have one entrance and exit point. And I think if we're talking about traffic studies, that's a place where we really do need to look at the traffic because when we spoke to the hotel developers, when they mentioned that they were performing a traffic study, I said, did you actually, are you actually studying the traffic patterns and the issues that might be presented? And they said, no, we're just doing a TDM management program. So there's a real discrepancy between a community that's engaged and active and trying to figure out how to preserve its character and what the city is representing is intractable issues to overcome. When, when we're one earthquake away and from some of these proposed developments that have only one entrance and exit point, and if there's a fire in one of them and everyone's trying to exit that building, that somehow that doesn't get studied.
Dimitri, I can give you about 30 seconds to wrap up.
Okay, move on to the next slide. I'm just saying that there's a big discrepancy there. This is the Alexandria campus currently. One of their huge parking lots is on the old county roadside. So that's a, and even if it's on commercial, it's still highly problematic. Lot of additional new cars, folks. Next slide. And this is, you know, you can, this was a way I was showing the, just the Alexandria developments. Next slide. So I just mentioned the entrance and the egress points, so we can move on to the next slide. So, you know, our intent was always to work with the city and work with police and fire and come up with a solution that worked. This is why this is a pilot program. So with, with the issues that the staff report brought up, we still feel that most of those are not, those arguments aren't particularly valid and we are asking for the council to approve the pilot program. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri. We appreciate your time tonight. We'll move on to the next public comment, Crystal.
Okay. We have two hands up. Greg Walker. You should be able to unmute.
Hi.
Hello?
Hello. Yes, my name is Greg Walker and I live on Cherry Street. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I was also part of some of the planning meetings as well to look into the details around it. And I guess my main concern is as a parent, I have two young children. I have spent more nights than I can count standing out, watching my children play on the street and having to be out there to control because of cars driving by. And I saw the cut-through numbers and percentages, those don't align with my own, what I've seen doing that. And most of our people on the street have parking permits because we have controlled parking, so we know who our neighbors are and we know their cars. And I have literally had to stand in front of cars before to slow them down and then watch them go sailing through the street out the other side. So I think that the cut-throughs are a lot higher than those numbers represent. And also, our street as well is very narrow. The whole issue about trash trucks and everything else, they can only go one direction on our street, so there's not really a two-way direction that would be a concern. And I am open to anything that is reasonable to help reduce the, just this cut-through traffic that we're seeing that's not neighborhood traffic. In addition, since we've had the stoplight that was put in over on East St. Carlos by the hotel there, I know for me personally, I ended up turning and going down to that stoplight quite a bit to exit the neighborhood just because of the traffic on industrial. So there, we're already seeing that additional traffic on Bayport by neighbors. But thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the ability to make a comment tonight.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Next up, we have three hands now. Next up is Jennifer Anderson Rose. If you can go ahead and unmute.
Yeah, hi. I also live on Cherry Street and I have also been involved in some of the planning meetings. I was in the meeting that has been referenced on March 3rd or whatever the date was by Stephen. And I have to say, I'm quite disappointed in the city staff who seems to be unwilling to collaborate in a constructive manner with our neighborhood. That meeting was not organized. There was no agenda and there was no effort to try to find a solution that would be a win-win for all of us. So I just have to share that. I also have some information on different aspects of the report. I contacted the post office as well. I also talked to the postmaster when I kind of talked to her in detail about the entire scenario. She said, oh, well, that would just be one recommendation. There's lots of options. We'd have to see what would happen. A pilot program seemed completely open to her. I talked to our mail carrier who said, I love this neighborhood and I also don't like traffic, so I'd support whatever the neighborhood supports. I also went around to collect signatures and a lot of our residents are in support of this. We're finding some kind of measure that will mitigate the cut-through traffic. So I really would ask for your support in finding a solution to this problem now. Setting a precedent isn't an issue because we are in an unprecedented situation. You guys are not deciding to put in tons of development everywhere else in the city. It's always put it on the east side, put it on the east side, put it on the east side. And to be honest, it sounds like you're more concerned about our neighbors driving down Bayport than 10,000 cars driving down my street where my kids are. So I would love to hear a little bit of support for our neighborhood and really following through on the promises that were made in the east side visioning project. I appreciate the time to make a comment and thank you for doing this study session.
Thank you, Jenna. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Next hand up is Michelle Bellinger. You can go ahead and unmute. There you go.
Hello, this is actually Damon Bellinger on my wife's computer. I live on Montgomery Street in East St. Carlos and I'd also like to express my support for the partial closure, at least the pilot program, because I think our neighborhood's trying to be forward-thinking and anticipate the cars that will be coming into our neighborhood in the future. People are talking about traffic studies that are happening today, but that doesn't reflect what will happen in the future. And just to remind everyone, this is a, this is a pilot program, so why not put it in place and gather more data, then we can make more determinations down the road. So that's basically what I wanted to say. Support the pilot program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Damon.
Okay. Up next is Gina Vandelos. Go ahead and unmute.
Hi, this is Gina and I live on Montgomery Street. And I'm disappointed with the current traffic coming down our street. I am very much concerned about the children playing and I think it, we just have to be thinking forward. I'm one of the people that went around our neighborhood gathering signatures, had the opportunity to talk to the neighbors, lots of them. Lots of them were voicing all sorts of concerns. I also had on my list somebody on Bayport and they just signed up right away. Yes, we want to have those partial closures. Just so, I know we're talking about Bayport and, you know, who those people want it. So we did get a majority of residents on the east side to approve the pilot program. So I really want to move forward with this and earnestly find solutions with the mail trucks and the trash collections. But from what I hear, that this, we can work with this. We can do this. So thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you. Next up is Scott Marsters.
Thank you, Mayor McDowell and council members. I want to read real quickly from some of your own city documents. So I'm going to pass on the Eastside Innovation District because that has already been talked about. But if you look at the city's neighborhood traffic management program, the first thing you'll notice is that when Mr. Machida talks about speed humps and some of the signage, he's looking at slowing down traffic. He's not actually looking at the section of the neighborhood traffic management that talks about cut through traffic. That gives the individuals like our neighborhood three choices. A diagonal diverter, which didn't seem to make sense at all. The other one that we looked at was one-way streets. That doesn't really work for us at all. And so that, and we ended up going with partial closures. And that met all of our needs. The one thing that I would also like to point out there is the minimum requirement here requires public meetings and buy-in from affected residents. We've got the buy-in from the affected residents. But it also would not divert more than 5% of traffic to another street. And so here's the issue with waiting. If we wait and that number gets above 5%, then what we're going to have is the reverse. We're now going to have city staff saying, we can't do, solve your cut through traffic problem because now you've gone over that 5% and our guidelines don't allow us to do that. So it really seems to me like what's happening here is city staff is looking for reasons not to help the neighborhood rather than looking for reasons or ways to help the individuals in the neighborhood to solve this problem. And we'd love to work with city staff on solving this problem. The problem is that they don't seem to want to solve the problem that we have. They want to divert it to slowing traffic. And so we want to adjust the traffic patterns now rather than after the issues arise. We want to be proactive in solving this problem for our neighborhood. The city wants to be reactive. They want to wait until there's a problem. And then they want to say, okay, now we have a problem. What can we do? Oh, we can't do that. We can't do that. Because those problems, those no longer fit our guidelines. So happy to work with people if they're willing to work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, we have five hands up now. Tara Berta, you're up next.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Tara Berta and I'm also a resident on Cherry Street. I was born and raised in San Carlos. I went to all the San Carlos schools. My grandparents still live in their home that they grew up in San Carlos. And just a long, long time resident. We've lived on Cherry Street for 16 years now. Wishing for the last 12, when my son was born, to have the road closed because of all the traffic and having him outside and playing. As Greg and Jen have both mentioned also, that we have just stood in front of the cars, our own cars parked, watching our kids ride their bikes or play games with each other, trying to block traffic. We are literally the barriers in the center of the road. And this was extremely evident during COVID. A blessing of COVID was that all the neighborhood kids, which we have a ton of kids on our block, were outside playing with each other, having the best time, of course, at a safe distance. But just, we were literally the barricades in the middle of the road. We're two houses up from industrial. And we would have to slow cars down for our kids in front of our house and also vice versa, coming down the other way. Also, now we're facing issues with the Blue Oak Brewery. Our street also seems to be a cut through for that and people parking on our street constantly. And again, people are drinking and walking in the neighborhood and leaving the bar. And the kids are outside playing. So there's multiple concerns and we are definitely in favor of even a pilot program just for a temporary closure to see the benefits. Our cat has been run over because the cars go so fast. We have big trucks coming down our streets ripping down our cable lines multiple times, just a few, you know, even when the kids were in virtual learning, the internet was cut because the trucks had ripped down the cable lines. They're telling us to raise them, but obviously this is where they put them. So I'm just in favor of my kids. Now they're in fourth and sixth grade. But in second and fourth grade, they both had persuasive writing units in school and they both wrote their papers, which I wish I had, about the reasons why it would benefit the city to close our streets and keep our neighborhood safe.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tara. Next up is Sonia Elt.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I really want to really give kudos to the East San Carlos group for, I've been so inspired by the way their neighborhood comes together and works together and brainstorms and comes up with creative solutions. I've been nothing but impressed and really want to commend that. I don't have any answers, but I support the idea of slowing down cars, making streets that are safe, you know, and not excessively trafficked. I'm wondering if the concern about the no, what is it, do not enter signs, if you physically write the exceptions, right? So except garbage trucks, except mail and emergency vehicles, and then definitely include bicyclists. I would definitely always want to support active transportation to go through these streets. They bring, you know, community connection, connecting neighbors, people, human face out and about in neighborhoods connects people and makes neighborhoods safer. So definitely want that to be an exception for the do not enter signs. Also, I know, Dr., I mean, Mr. Machida was talking about curb extensions, but I really want to emphasize curb extensions should prefer mid-block. If you're going to do something to slow traffic down, can you make it a mid-block, you know, a mid-block crossing, something that does not push concrete out from the edge? And please don't do it concrete, please do it with, you know, temporary materials. Because it's never helpful to cement in the street parking that, you know, is on the side of a street. Also, speed cushions, ones with emergency vehicle cut throughs, I think can also be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you, Sonia. Up next is Sierra Warner. You should be able to, there you go.
Hi, yes, thank you for the opportunity to comment. Our son would like to make a comment. But first, I'll just second what our neighbors on Cherry Street have brought forward. And we are grateful for your consideration of this pilot. Go ahead, William.
I am William Warner. I live on Cherry Street. I am six years old. I want to close this street so I can ride my bike safely. Thank you for your help.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sierra and William.
Okay, I have two hands up again from Jennifer Anderson-Rose. I wonder if...
This is Sonia Womaka. I have just five seconds left. I just wanted to say, can you do one street? Could you do a one-street pilot where kids could gather on that particular street and walk there safely instead of all of them at once, maybe as a pilot? That was another idea.
Sorry about that, Jennifer. Looks like you're unmuted. Okay. I think she canceled it. So it looks like there are no further hands.
Okay, thank you.
She raised it back up. I'm wondering if maybe it's another member of her household.
Okay, it was another member of the household. We don't typically take repeat comments, but we can see what she...
She lowered her hand again. So, oh, nope, it's, it is back up. Okay, Jennifer, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? My name is Daniel Rossi. I'm actually Jennifer's husband.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you know, I actually, I head out early in the morning. I get out about 5:00 AM in the morning. That happens to always be about the same time that the trucks start, the garbage trucks start coming through our neighborhood when trash pickup day is happening. So the idea that they're going to have a harder time at 5:00 AM making that turn is just kind of unfounded. I'm usually one of maybe two or three other people leaving that early in the morning. So I don't really see a partial closure of the street being a problem for the garbage truck to make that turn. Another thing that we're saying is I think they're saying partial closure and people are thinking one-way streets when we say that. I don't think that's what's going to be. It's only going to be an inlet-outlet on one side, which is those busier streets. I would really like to see our city government be maybe one of those few people that, or few, you know, entities actually looks forward rather than trying to come after there's a problem. Because doing that is usually not the best-case scenario. And being a pilot program, the great thing about that is you guys can do an actual study during the pilot program and then use that information to say, yes, this actually works well. Or hey, we gave it six months, it's actually not working. And we did our study during this time. This future study that's ongoing, I mean, nobody knows when that's going to come through. And we're talking five or 10 years. Five or 10 years from now, all those properties are going to be developed and it's going to be really late for us to start trying to fix a sinking ship at that point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daniel. Still any further public comment?
Yes, one more hand is up. Patty M. You should be able to unmute.
Okay, hi. Patty Marsters, Cherry Street. I want to thank, first of all, all my neighbors for their wonderful comments and actually well-thought-out reasoning. One thing that I didn't see, and I'd like to thank the council for considering this, even if all the points that were made in the staff recommendation, even if they're true, which I don't believe they are, but even if, I feel that we should still go forward now, as people pointed out, when, before all the buildings are built. But also, you, if you want to do a traffic demand management that will have some bite to it, then you need to prioritize the residents and residential service support on our residential streets. And you need to encourage, that's the way you're going to encourage all those new workers, which is going to be more than 10,000 new workers. That's only what we've projected so far. So you're going to have to encourage them to take public transit by saving our streets for the residents. I think, I think that's it. I had more, but they said everything. They were great. And I hope that you can get this pilot project going. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
We do have another hand that came up. Anna Zanick.
Anna Asha and my boyfriend Jeff Meili. We live on Hall Street and I'm coming in late. One of my fellow neighbors on Cherry Street just wanted me to come in and say something. And my neighbor, Suzie Vick, was one of the ones that started the petition to have this done. And I want to thank her for helping with that, helping collect signatures. And, you know, I just want to say, I really hope we can get this pilot program going. I live on Hall and I have terminal behind me. And we have sometimes big trucks coming on our street and, you know, other vehicles from people working in the neighborhood already. And given all of the development that's happening in our neighborhood, it really is going to impact us down the line. So I just really hope we could just get a pilot program growing and just try it out. And Jeff wanted to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I lived on Milvia Street in Berkeley for several years. And it had the same setup that's being discussed here, where it was restricted on one side. We had zero issues with garbage trucks or other large trucks, moving trucks, making it out of the street. And it significantly reduced the traffic and really increased the quality of living on that street.
Yeah, it was really quiet and it's just, it even makes it a bit safer for, you know, children if they're playing. I was able to spend some time in Berkeley on that street and I really, really liked the setup. It was just really organized and well-done. So thank you for your time. I really hope we could get this pilot program running. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you. We do have one more hand up now. Raquel Walker.
Hi, so yes, I am Raquel Walker. I also live on Cherry Street. And I'm just urging the city to support that pilot program as well. You know, everybody has talked about the neighborhood and all of the things that we are concerned about in terms of street safety and being able to do it safely with our children. And I just think about how we are sort of a small minority in the whole city of San Carlos. And I think that trying to do a pilot program in our area, I mean, it just seems like it wouldn't hurt anything. I think it would be really helpful to at least give it a try and see how it works, just like everybody was saying. You know, there's going to be, there's a large majority of new businesses that are popping up, particularly on the east side, right off of, you know, industrial and Old County Road right there. So it really impacts the comings and goings in our area. And so I would just like to urge the city to support the pilot program and see what we can do so that we're not using our own cones and our own bodies and different multiple adults to kind of mitigate traffic ourselves. So I'm hoping that you will consider doing this pilot. Thank you.
Thank you, Raquel.
Thank you. And there are no further hands.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. I'd like to take a moment to thank all of the members of the public. That was a significant amount of public comment that we received on this issue. And I will open it up to council discussion or perhaps further questions. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question that I thought about during the public comment. They mentioned the petition. I didn't see anything in the staff report about the number of people that signed the petition.
By my count, it's about 250 people.
And do we know how many homes are in that area? 500?
I don't, yeah.
100, okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer Lohian.
Thank you. So I received an email today, I think maybe Resto Council did as well, from a business owner around that area. And I'm just curious if they've been engaged in conversation with this? And if so, can you provide some context and color around that?
So we haven't really actually done the outreach. You know, one of the things that the greater east... You know, one of the things that the greater east San Carlos neighborhood really wanted to actually provide or actually get this in before a council. But one of the things, we wanted to make sure that, we wanted to kind of get your feedback initially before we engage a much wider neighborhood, not knowing exactly, you know, where the council kind of sits on this position, or, you know, which direction that you would actually provide to us. So, I didn't want to go too far into something that perhaps that's not the direction that the council really wants us to follow.
Any further questions, Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
No.
Okay. We'll move to Vice Mayor Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to thank all the public comment. I appreciated getting all that input, and Dmitri for his presentation as well. Stephen, have we, was there any talk about, I know that was sort of briefly mentioned by Ms. Elks about sort of a more, smaller pilot program? Would that give us any kind of insight if we only took sort of one or two streets instead of sort of the whole area to get like a little more insight?
You know, certainly any type of pilot is always a good thing, you know, certainly smaller. However, you know, I do want to really kind of caution council that, you know, whatever type of improvements that we actually do on the streets, you know, my staff and our consultants kind of have to look a little bit deeper as far as those type of improvements. So, we really do need to make sure that we feel comfortable that whatever we do is safe, and it really is going to solve the kind of the problem.
And that's helpful. Sorry, did you have more stuff to add? And I guess I'm just trying to understand, so I know that there was brought up a little bit about the, some other streets that were closed. I mean, the only really ones, we haven't really done any other residential closures, is that correct? Because the ones that were pointed out on the Belmont Line were done by Belmont, not by San Carlos, is that right?
That's correct.
So, we had no control over those specific, other than the downtown, which is, I would say, more commercial versus residential in that aspect.
That's correct. That's correct.
And I'm just, I appreciate that, I'm just struggling a little bit. I live close to, you know, to Burton Park, and so we get a lot of cut-through traffic coming through where I am, people going to the park, trying to get over to Britton and others from Arroyo. So, I understand what people are going through on that, because living over there for a number of years, I've certainly seen that happen in speeding overwells as well. So, I'm certainly sympathetic, and, you know, I'm sort of interested in seeing what kind of solutions might be there, but trying to find the right balance around the rest of the neighborhoods who, I mean, who maybe have different kinds of cut-through traffic as well. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Stephen, I have a question, too. So, today, I walked around this neighborhood to kind of check things out, and it was noon, it wasn't a busy time. But I did talk to a few neighbors, and one of the neighbors mentioned to me that 18-wheelers drive down Cherry. And I'm wondering, have you heard of this? Maybe the chief has heard of this. Ms. Berta mentioned big trucks ripping down cable lines. Another caller mentioned large trucks going down this street. So, I think that there's, you know, there's car cut-through traffic, but as this area redevelops, as was mentioned by Ms. Rossi, you know, there's a lot of development coming to this area of town, including perhaps truck, large truck cut-through traffic. So, wondering if you have heard anything about that?
So, I have not heard anything in regards to that. Occasionally, we do have some construction truck vehicle that, you know, may be delivering or kind of doing the cut-through, but typically, when I do hear that, certainly I, you know, will have my inspector kind of try to find that truck, you know, and kind of redirect them to other streets, and certainly it shouldn't be going down residential streets unless they have a specific delivery on that particular street.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Do you, I think Stephen is looking for some direction from the council this evening, so I will open it up. I see Councilmember Collins has his hand raised.
Thank you. Stephen, another question I thought of, you know, Ms. Elks said she thought maybe a small pilot program might work, but I got to thinking about that, and wouldn't any kind of a, sort of a mini-pilot program potentially not really give you the results that you're looking for? And couldn't it skew the rest of the neighborhood if you've got one, if you're doing part of it and you're not doing all of it? I don't, I fail to understand that, so...
Certainly, that is a possibility. You know, perhaps not having enough of the data, and what metric would you be really measuring it against? Because we really won't have a lot of that information. But I think further is, you know, even if we were to do a pilot on, say, a single street, you know, how would we, I mean, I think we'd have to have some pretty significant discussions with, you know, the recologies and the other, you know, just to see how we could actually work together. So, perhaps we'll have the, you wouldn't have that inconvenience, or the noise, or the backing and things. You know, I know there is some discussions about, well, you know, that's what recology could do, is just drive them the wrong way, but, you know, certainly I am a little concerned, because I certainly am not in the position to tell recology to drive, you know, the wrong direction, and I believe their probably safety manual would not allow it as well.
Yeah. I just, it just seems that you wouldn't get a lot of useful or valid data out of it, and, you know, I could make things worse. So, if you're going to do a pilot tour, I would, I would do it for the whole, the whole area that has been required. The other question I had was the mention of the large vehicles. Do we have any signs up that say, no vehicles over so many pounds?
I know on some streets, I can't recall if we have any on these streets, and that's something I'll probably need to get back with council on.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Ron. Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Thank you. So, I want to thank the community for coming out and sharing their perspective in staff's report on this tonight. I did a walking tour also this past weekend, actually Mother's Day. That's how I started my day, working for the community. But it was very illuminating, because what I observed is, with some of the new traffic lights that are down there on Old County Road, when that line of traffic backs up, I can completely empathize how the cut-through traffic will, you know, has probably already started, and that's what we heard tonight. And I'm hearing what the community is looking for is safe streets, which we know we want our community to be safe, and also concern about the traffic patterns, right? So, if we look at this community, on one side, we have 101, and on the other side, El Camino, and then Industry, that is also adjacent to the community as well, more development coming in. And I appreciate the comments about the Berkeley area. I lived near there for a while, and I can tell you, as somebody in a neighboring community, it was frustrating, because it would take me personally longer to get where I wanted to go, but I also appreciated why the neighbors wanted the street blocked at that end. So, it would be curious to me to understand, how did Berkeley navigate this, and what were some of the changes that they made to accommodate the public works and service vehicles and that type of thing? In addition, I had an opportunity when I was working in Santa Clara during a very economic boom time, traffic was incredible, and I had a 45-mile commute, and sometimes it would take me three hours to get home. And one route was through East Palo Alto, and I saw firsthand the impact of economic boom time and people trying to cut through to get to the Dunbarton Bridge. That city also took some measures to try to protect those residents from people like myself, and I respected that when they made those changes. What I'm seeing in the staff report tonight is, I think, you know, obviously some really important concerns that I think need to be sorted through, but I'm hopeful that we could try to find a path forward, because it sounds to me like the stress on the community is already starting, and I can imagine their concerns moving forward is, it's just going to get worse. And I would like to see, you know, some movement in this direction to try to figure out with all that we know is going to happen over there, and we did spend a lot of time on that east-side innovation plan, with the idea being that we wanted to make sure that that new commercial development would be fit in with current residents and not put more stress on that community. So, I don't, I don't know what the answers are, but I appreciate the request to be proactive about it. And so, I would, you know, hope that we could continue in some way, move forward, to have this conversation, bring in the businesses that might be impacted by some of these closures, and maybe look at some other models if this particular suggestion doesn't necessarily work, but I appreciate the want to be proactive about it, and maybe it could be a phased approach, right? Where over, we take some initial measures and then, you know, check in and see how that's going, and is it making a difference, is it not, and make adjustments as we move forward. So, that would be, you know, my recommendation, is that we try to continue to work together with the community and figure out how to manage this before it becomes a huge stressor. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Vice Mayor Rec.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I actually had a question, too, I think maybe for both chiefs, if they're there. I don't know if we talked about sort of the issue, if there's a major traffic accident or backup, how do you access in there? And I'm just wondering if, you know, how you control things at some point if things are at a standstill over there? If we got to that sort of emergency situation, 101 is backed up, or something's on Industrial or Old County, and you literally can't go anywhere, how do we manage that from a traffic flow and a safety standpoint?
I think from the, from the fire department, good evening, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor Rec. From a fire department point of view, it just simply slows our response. We will respond with lights and siren, and the more impacted things get, the longer it does take for our cars to get out of the way. It also matters whether there's a place for people to pull over, which is a problem that we run into on those narrow streets, and that legacy infrastructure that we talk about in other parts of town as well. And then, we would request sheriff's office for traffic control when we need it. But again, getting to the scene is not, they're not necessarily able to help with that part.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hello? I don't really have anything else to add, but just that we would have to deploy our resources to the outskirts to get to move traffic, which would delay time for us to get into where we're trying to go, to make room for fire, to make room for us to get through, to help our citizens.
Thank you both. I guess are we giving comment as well on that? Again, I appreciate all the public comment and the presentation from staff and the work on it. I mean, I think, I'd love to try to find some solutions. I heard some, you know, some different ideas that were, you know, presented that we can, I think require a little more research in terms of, even if it, I'd love to understand, like if we didn't allow certain left-hand or right-hand turns at certain times of day, if we had signs about trucks, if we, you know, and then also consider kind of the range of options, not saying that this here can't work, but I think we need to spend a little more time, and I am, you know, want to make sure that we sort of are providing access on, we're not impacting access on East San Carlos Avenue for bikes. If we're going to rezone over there potentially, as we look at our housing element, are there things that are going to change that are going to be impactful, that we're not thinking about long-term, and how that impacts both the neighborhood traffic as well? So, I think there has to be some options and solutions, and I'd love to kind of keep this discussion going, and see how we can come to some things that may work and work in the middle, and maybe we can get there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, yeah, I do appreciate the greater east San Carlos neighborhood and all their thoughtful input and their effort to think through this one. And I'll just say, I have a bit of a soft spot for their request, in that I grew up on a cul-de-sac street, and I sought one out when I moved to San Carlos, who live on Chilton Avenue, and it is just, you know, to the extent we're interested in community building, I will say cul-de-sacs or, you know, restricted streets like that really are a wonderful place for families, and that gives me a bit of a soft spot. But I'll say, where I live up on Chilton, our cul-de-sac oddly is not at the end of our street. We have about eight houses past the cul-de-sac, and my home office actually looks down on that. And I just reflect that every week I do see three recology massive trucks doing a whole dance to try to service those eight houses on the end, and it is a challenge. And I worry about the children of the neighborhood as these massive trucks are doing all their maneuvers on our otherwise pretty quiet streets. So, it is a real problem. I think, my thinking on this, I think really would, you know, I would really want to understand how recology will respond to that, if they would allow that exception to happen, or if that's not realistic. If it really did come down to those big trucks backing down those longer streets, I think that really is a real problem, so that is something I think we would want an answer to. And then, my only other counterthought is, I, you know, in general, I don't like government resources towards problems that don't quite exist yet. And I certainly understand the perception of this neighborhood. It is a heck of a lot of development coming. I'm very aware and sensitive to that, and I don't blame them for thinking out in front of this. But, you know, if we're studying it now, and those initial cut-through numbers do look fairly minor, you know, and an argument certainly can be made that we should watch this problem over time, and perhaps think about mitigation when it becomes more of a significant problem. So, those are my thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't mention it earlier, but thank you to everybody that called. They always have interesting comments and always gives us something to think about. One of the things that concerned me is that you had, what, four different service providers express concern, sheriff, fire, garbage, post office, and we didn't, I don't know that we talked to them, but we also have lots of delivery services. We have Amazon, and who knows, you know, how many additional service vehicles that come into that area every day? So, and I don't have any answers for it, but that does concern me, although I am a little bit impressed that, you know, 250 people signed a petition. So, I'm wondering if maybe this matter just doesn't deserve some more study. I think that it probably would make sense and have some value to meet with the community and come to an understanding, either we're going to do it, and we're going to do it in a way that is agreeable, or we're not going to do it, and everybody understands why. But I think it's important for, to have that conversation. I'm not sure where I come down on it. There are valid concerns, you know, both from our standpoint and from the resident's standpoint. So, my thought would be to have a little bit more engagement before we start making any changes. So, there you go.
Thanks, Ron. Really great comments and feedback from my colleagues tonight. My thoughts are, what I'm hearing from the community is a desire to work with the city, to collaborate, and to be proactive and forward-thinking. And I think part of the reason that we wanted to move forward with the east-side vision plan was to be proactive in addressing the amount of development coming. I note, as I think Dmitri said, our eighth big move of the vision plan is to prioritize reduction of freight and cut-through traffic in residential neighborhoods to the north. And I know that we're in a process right now of implementation of our vision plan, and so it does seem like an appropriate time to be studying this. I think that there was a great suggestion of looking at the learnings from Berkeley and other cities that have done these partial street closures, and how they have mitigated the impacts of the garbage trucks and the delivery vehicles. I agree with Councilmember Collins, that I think now is a great time to begin some community outreach. Stephen, you did such a great job with the bike and ped master plan process. I remember going to L'Oréal Park, to the little building there, and doing the sticky notes with the community, and I think that that would be a really nice exercise to do now, to look at different options. I think you brought forward an interesting, maybe middle ground of the no-left turns or no-right turns during certain hours of the day. I also think that this neighborhood has a special circumstance, as I've mentioned, with the development. I don't have 18-wheelers driving down my street, and they do, and I think that, you know, there are some pretty significant concerns in the impact of development that's coming to that area. I think that's all I had to add tonight. I think I want to, again, thank the community for all of their input. Stephen, is there additional direction that you would like from us tonight?
No, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for all your comments.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. It is now 9 o'clock, so we usually take a break at this point, two hours into the meeting, so we'll take a 10-minute break. And if anyone wants to go out and see City Hall lit up in green, now would be a great time, and I will see you back in 10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Well, the meeting back to order and we will move on to item 8B. Discuss and provide direction on amendments to the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18 dot 23 dot 210, accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units. And I see we have Andrea here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Andrea Marticich, Principal Planner with Community Development. This next item before you is a study session for proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance. To provide a bit of background, on October 26th of 2020, the City Council adopted an ordinance in response to bringing accessory dwelling units, which you'll hear me refer to as ADUs, and junior accessory dwelling units, or JDUs, in compliance with state law. Since its adoption and through review of applications as well as public inquiries, staff has identified several barriers to the creation of these units. As a result, staff has prepared several proposed changes to the ordinance to both clarify the original intent of the adopted ordinance as well as reduce these unintended obstacles that have occurred for the construction of ADUs and JDUs. On April 18th of this year, the Planning Commission reviewed these changes and is recommending the council approve these. Subsequent to this meeting, staff did decide to bring this forward to City Council as a study session item to allow a chance to provide additional feedback prior to bringing forward a formal ordinance. Tonight's purpose is to review these changes as recommended by the Planning Commission and receive feedback and direction from the council. I also wanted to mention that one of council's strategic goals, housing, focuses in part on expediting ADU approvals. We believe that these proposed changes will help to remove barriers to the creation of ADUs and will also provide clarification to the existing ordinance, which will result in more certainty for both homeowners and applicants. Prior to reviewing the proposed changes, I just wanted to refresh our memories of what constitutes a JDU and an ADU. JDUs can be no more than 500 square feet and may be proposed either as a conversion of existing floor area or proposed as part of a new residence. They are not allowed in detached structures and are not allowed, or excuse me, are only allowed as part of the main residence itself. ADUs, on the other hand, may be detached or attached, can be conversions of existing space or new space, and may be larger than 500 square feet. They can be up to 1,000 square feet depending on the number of bedrooms. Most of the changes proposed this evening are to address barriers to feasibility. Specifically, there are minor adjustments that we are proposing, which include changes to balconies, windows, and setbacks. Prior to getting into these changes, I also wanted to briefly outline some of the items included in the proposal, which we're viewing as clarification items. These are not changes per se to the existing policies or practices, but rather are clarifying language to address questions that have come up over the last few years as a result of our application review as well as public questions. So to go through these, for JDUs, we are clarifying that the JDUs may only be included within existing residence walls or as part of a new residence. As we've done reviews, we've spoken with the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, and they have confirmed that additions may not be made solely to house JDUs. They have to be within the existing walls or as part of a new residence. So we did want to add that to the existing code. For ADUs, a few items of clarification. First is that additions would be allowed to non-conforming structures as long as the new construction conforms to the current code. The second item would be that second-story ADUs that are attached to the residence must meet the main house setbacks with the exception of one instance, which I'll discuss in a minute. And then finally, clarification that ADUs may only be sold separately from the main residence when allowed by state law. So for example, we have AB 345, which allows in very specific instances qualified nonprofit builders to sell an ADU separate from the house. It's a very limited opportunity to do so, so we don't see this happening too often, but we did want to add the language to comply with current state law. So to move on to the changes to the development standard, once again, those which we saw as the primary barriers had to do with balconies, windows, and rear setbacks on reverse corner lots. And I'll go through each of these in order. So the first category is balconies. Our current requirement states that balconies, decks, and open stair landings cannot face the rear or near side property line unless allowed for ingress or egress. We are proposing to modify this requirement so that it applies only to the second floor and above for both JDUs and ADUs. The intent of this was to maximize privacy when it was first created and we found that it doesn't really make sense on first-floor exits and entrances where there's landings and decks. Normally we'll have at least a six-foot fence and some landscaping, so wanted to clean that up because it's been a bit of a struggle for people to design their outdoor space with that. The next category has to do with windows. Our current regulations note that windows within 10 feet of the property line shall be, have obscure glass, so you can't see through it, as well as five-feet sill heights to maximize privacy for neighbors. This requirement only applies to ADUs. The proposed language would remove this restriction completely for the first floor, but the language would allow the director to determine whether windows on the second floor of an ADU should have either obscure glass or a minimum sill height based on the specific conditions of the proposal and the existing environment. The last change is related to rear setbacks for ADUs when they are located on the second floor of a residence and also located on a reverse corner lot. In this case, the proposal is to allow for a five-foot rear setback on the second floor. In the next few slides, I'll review what reverse corner lots are and why the change is proposed to increase feasibility for these lots. So to look just generally at reverse corner lots and what they are, I've included this diagram to assist with the different explanations. Towards the bottom of the screen, you'll see a corner lot that's highlighted in blue and this red line to the rear, which indicates the rear property line for this lot. As you can see, the lot with the gray building shares a rear property line with this blue lot. Each of these lots have the same rear setback and their rear yards face each other. Above this, you'll see a reverse corner lot. This is in the green. The red line again represents the rear property line for this lot. However, in this case, you can see that the rear property line for the corner lot is actually a portion of the side property line for the key lot and its respective building, which is shown in that yellow color. In this case, the rear yard from the reverse corner, excuse me, reverse corner lot lines up with a smaller side yard of the key lot. So here are some examples of reverse corner lots. In both of these cases, the front yard is facing the street and the views that we're looking at are the exterior side yards. In addition to what was mentioned before, reverse corner lots have an additional constraint. The house must be setback further than the required street setback for the rear portion of the lot. For the last 25% of the lot, the setback from the exterior side must match the front yard of the neighbor to the rear. On this diagram, the blue line represents the exterior side setback and the red line represents the neighbor's front yard setback. So you can see that the house on this reverse corner lot has to then step in to be in line with the front setback of that key lot to the right. Under the current code, the 15-foot rear setback is what is required for the second floor. And again, the proposal is to change this to a five-foot setback for second-floor ADUs that are attached to the house. And this would apply only on these reverse corner lots. On this diagram, the green square is the area that represents the additional area that would be buildable if this is approved. There are several reasons why this is being recommended. First, reverse corner lots generally have a rear yard, or I'm sorry, always have a rear yard that's adjacent to a neighbor's side yard and oftentimes appear to be a side yard due to the layout of this house, of the house. So you can see in both of these, the rear setback lines up with the side setback of the house behind it. Garages on reverse corner lots are generally located towards the rear of the lot and building an ADU above a single-story garage is attractive to homeowners for aesthetic reasons, cost to build, and relation to the neighboring properties. Due to these unique circumstances, the proposed changes are needed to remove obstacles to the construction of ADUs on these type of lots to create units that are both habitable as well as economically feasible. So again, looking at these examples, these red boxes show where the ADU addition could occur, generally speaking, if you were to approve a five-foot rear setback. In terms of next steps, we're anticipating returning before council on June 13th for a first reading and June 27th for a second reading. Some other actions that we're also taking is meeting with several ADU designers who design pre-approved units to get a better understanding of what those are and see if it's something that would fit with the city. We're also setting up a meeting with an ADU ally from the City of San Jose and that is a staff person who is very involved with their ADU process and we want to get some best practices and ideas from them. And we anticipate returning to the council with updates and feedback from all of this in early fall. And with that, I am done and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Questions from council? Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Andrea. Very clear presentation. No real questions. I just want to make sure I understand with the JDUs, we're basically just making a clarification back to full conformance with state law, but the clarification is you, I heard you say you can't have a JADU or you can't do a house extension solely to create a JADU, but can you do a larger house extension and then part of that new extension include a JADU or not?
So the way the law is written, no, you cannot. The JDU has to be in existing wall area. We've had a lot of back-and-forth conversations. Our original assumption was that you could, of course, do an addition and do a JDU in it and spoke with HCD and they were very clear that no, you cannot do that. It has to be within an existing house. That's not to say you couldn't do an addition and then come back later and convert that to a JDU. There's no language in terms of like timing for that, but that is something that HCD was pretty clear about.
So once an addition is done, those then become your existing walls and then you arguably could then put in for a JDU within those walls?
Yeah, I mean, the intent, my understanding from HCD is really that JDUs are when you convert existing bedrooms for the most part to additional units. So you're theoretically not adding to, you know, capacity with utilities and things like that. So I think from their perspective, it's really, you know, sort of a lesser way of a homeowner to be able to make additional income or have a little unit. So for them, you wouldn't necessarily build a new one was their justification.
Yeah, yeah, it's just kind of, it seems odd to me that they would discourage JDUs in that, in that way, but I guess we're just conforming to it, so, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Vice Mayor Rock.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Andrea. Just a quick question. Can you just clarify a little bit more for me on the reverse corner lots? So, and maybe I'm just a little, want to make sure I'm clear. So the pictures you showed were all single-story houses, right? So would you be able to then build a second story on top of the garage and have the rest of the house be one-story or does it have to be conforming? So you could, you could just build a second story above the attached garage?
If it were an ADU only.
As an ADU and not, not touch the rest of the house?
Correct.
From that? And then you just have to have that setback be the five feet versus the 15?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And just to go a little bit further, if you were to do a second-story addition that was not an ADU on that bottom picture, for example, it would have to stop before it hits the garage to meet the 15-foot setback for the house.
Say that one more time, sorry.
So a second-story addition that does not contain an ADU and has to meet the 15-foot setback would only be able to extend to, you know, over?
To the 15 feet. It's only if you're building an ADU that you could get to that five feet.
Correct. And only on one of these reverse corner lots.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that question. And I'm saying this, I, you know, obviously I want more housing in San Carlos, but I believe that there has been a lot of pushback in Redwood City, and I don't know if you've been following that too, about these second-story ADUs going up really close to the fence line and the next-door neighbor, you know, feeling like the house is right there and, you know. So what are your thoughts on that? And then number two, is this, is this state law that we have to comply with or this is just something that you're bringing forward based on what residents have encountered?
Sure. So for the first question, yes, there's definitely been pushback. I have seen it for, for Redwood City. We do currently allow a second, an ADU above a garage that's detached and that can have a four-foot setback. So sort of similar in that instance. We haven't had, as far as I know, much pushback about that. With, you know, with these ones, the way these lots are designed, the reverse corner lot ends sort of halfway up the lot of that key lot to the side. So theoretically, the house on that key lot would, the ADU wouldn't be overlooking like the rear yard of that house, just of where it ends. But it is, it is definitely a consideration in a policy call whether that, that would be something that we would want to encourage. I can say that we have had several of these inquiries come in and we've had to say no to all of them because they don't meet the setback. One of them wanted to pursue an SB9 application to be able to do it, but didn't want to. That was just the only way they saw forward in this situation. And so there is that option. I don't know if people would take it if they didn't have the ability to do this. And then your second question, the state does not require us to allow ADUs on the second floor. That's something that we decided as a city to allow. If we do allow them, then they have to follow our city guidelines. So there's none of the four-foot setback requirements that the state mandates for second-floor attached JDUs. So it's completely up to the city on whether to even allow them.
And right now, we only allow a second-story ADU on top of a garage, on top of a detached garage?
We allowed on top of the house as well, but it has to meet the normal setbacks for the house. So 15-foot rear, nine-foot side, 19-foot front. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Rock.
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on that question as well. Can you just, one clarification on the detached garages and then I want to ask again about the key lot piece that the mayor mentioned. So if you have an existing garage on the property line, as many do around in certain areas of town, can you build a second story on top of that or do you have to demolish and move to do an ADU?
You are able to build a second story on top of that. You have to maintain, I believe it's a minimum of a four-foot setback on the second floor and you're limited to, I believe it's 20 feet in height. So the?
I see. So you'd have to sort of move that second story out?
Right.
From, even if the first story was already on the property line?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, I understand. Okay. And then, so it sounds like the five feet is, I mean, I'd love to understand after the mayor's question, line of questioning, sort of how you got to five feet versus six, seven, eight, or leave it at the current nine?
Sure. So we got to five feet because it matches with the side setback for the lot behind it.
I see. Okay.
Yeah, and it is, I mean, it is pretty generous. We did find when speaking with people who were, you know, asking about how they could do it, that we also had to account for stairs up to the ADU. They need to have their own ingress and egress and what the setbacks would be for that. So I mean, there's, it's definitely not something that, you know, it has to be at five feet. There's, you know, between five and 15 and I think any relief would, would be helpful. But we did pick the five feet to match with that, that side setback of the house or the lot behind it.
And that's because sort of on the, you're looking at the other side as a side lot, so therefore your, the setback on the second story is not, is just five feet?
The second-story setback is between five and nine.
Depending on, because you're on, because you're on a side lot for that.
Exactly.
So, I see. So we could just try to match that and that would still be better, right? If we said nine feet versus 15, so you're still giving some leeway around. So we have some flexibility around that to try to match the second story. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have one more question. How many reverse corner lots do we have? Are they kind of few and far between, or are they on every block?
There's quite a few. I, I don't know the exact number. That's something I could find out and come back with when we bring it back. But I've been looking since I've been working on this. There's definitely, I would say on most blocks, at least one or two. The, the corner lots that we talk about that are not reverse corner really only exist if the block is narrow enough to have two lots back-to-back. And most of our lots have, you know, the corner lots and a few in between. So I'd say it's, it's, there's more reverse corner lots than not, I would guess.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open it up to public comment? Okay, seeing none, thanks, Andrea. We'll go ahead and take public comment now on this item. Crystal, is anyone waiting in the waiting room?
There are no hands for this item.
Okay, we'll open it up to council discussion on this item. Vice Mayor.
Also, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ask one question, sorry, for Andrea, too. At the planning commission meeting, was there any feedback from the public in terms of the distance?
No.
Okay. Would you like my comments, too? Okay. So I, I'm definitely inclined with moving the line closer because it seems like that is inhibiting. And I know, for example, I have four of those reverse corner lots on my block because of the way the blocks are. And so I guess I'm struggling a little bit with what the right number is, whether it's five or seven, or what, what gives sort of enough balance around that. So I guess I'm inclined to go a little bit more than five and have a little bit more leeway, but to try to, maybe try to find a little more balance around the second story. But to definitely move it so that there is, so someone who wants to do that has a more opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would just say that, you know, I think all these changes are either conforming to state law or otherwise thoughtful and based on our experience. So I, you know, I think I'm fully in support of the recommendation here. With regard to the reverse corner lots, I would just point out that although the five feet might seem small, it's limited to the, it's only going to be over the side yard. In no case would that be looming over the backyard or the front yard of the neighboring property. So I think that's important. Thank you.
Andrea, does that, is that, do you concur with what Councilmember Dugan just said? That it would only go over the side yard in all circumstances?
I would, I would say yes, but, you know, not knowing how all the lots are set up, it is something that we could limit within the code itself, like, and shall, you know, not pass the, the existing house next door. So we'll come up with some better language than that, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Palmer Lohan.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for bringing this forward. I appreciate, you know, we've been making a lot of changes to our housing policy lately, and this demonstrates to me you're actively listening to the community and understanding where we run into some hiccups with our policy and bringing it forward. I really appreciate, so I'm going to be in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nice presentation, Andrea. I, I fully support all the changes, so I'm good with it.
Thanks, Ron. Is this common with what other communities are doing for these reverse corner lots?
It really varies depending on the community. We can prepare, do additional research, and prepare some information on what other communities do in this instance.
I see the vice mayor would like to add something.
Sorry, I realize I did not mention, I'm in favor of all the other changes. That's the only one that I just have a question and would like a little more information on, sort of what other communities are. So everything else looks great.
I would concur with that. Did you need, we're not voting on this tonight, it's just a study session, so we're just giving you some feedback on questions and concerns. Okay, perfect. Anything else from the council to add to this tonight? Okay, thanks, Andrea.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Just a point, a clarification. Given what we saw tonight, this will come back, what, for adoption, or at least first reading and first meeting in June? Do I understand that correctly?
We're anticipating June 13th. I just need to check with the city attorney, since the planning commission's already recommended approval if the changes are significant, if it needs to go back to planning commission or not. But, but the plan is June 13th.
My understanding was minor changes, it'll come back. I mean, we'll have it to, to look at and vote on on first meeting, June. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item 9A, new business, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing a call for bids for the installation of new sports field lighting at Flanagan and Stadium Fields, project C 1818. And I understand that the vice mayor needs to recuse himself from the Flanagan Field lighting, so we are going to start with Stadium, and then the vice mayor will recuse himself. Does that sound all right?
That sounds great.
Okay. Hi, Amy, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and community. I'm Amy Newby, Director of Parks and Recreation. It's really nice to be back in council chambers and here with you this evening. Tonight, I will be introducing the new field lighting project at Burton and Highlands Parks before turning it over to Hugh King from Salus O'Brien to review the design for both park sites. And as it was just mentioned, we will begin with Stadium Field at Highlands Park, and then we'll go over to Flanagan Field at Burton Park. So just to review the project timeline, this past January, consultants and staff presented the 65% design drawings to city council for comments and feedback. It was at this meeting that council provided direction to proceed with lighting design for both Flanagan and Stadium Fields, in addition to adding lighting to the batting cages. We are here tonight for city council to consider adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing a call for bids for construction. The tentative schedule for the project has the construction bid opening scheduled for June 6th and to return to city council on June 27th to award the construction contract. Construction is anticipated to begin this summer and conclude by the end of the calendar And with that said, I would like to introduce Hugh King, our electrical engineer with Salus O'Brien. He was on the team to design phase one of this project back in 2019, and he was able to continue with us for this phase of the project.
Good evening, everyone. So yes, so as part of this, we did some minor modifications based on the comments we received from you all last time on the 65. So skipping Burton, going down to Highlands. So there was some minor relocation or shifting of the existing sports field poles to, to reduce some of the spill lighting and also take into account some of the field positioning. And then we also added five pedestrian poles for pathway lighting around the field, and they're at a much level, a lower level at 12 feet. And then added batting cage lighting at the existing batting cage. So on Highlands, this is the layout of both fields. So phase one is already complete, and looking at that right side, phase two. And here, so the, again, the, the layout of the pole, the, the sports field light poles are in red there. Those have not changed much on plan north on the, the top side of the, of the field. We did shift a couple of those poles inside, a little closer inside to reduce spill lighting on the east side of the, the east plan side of the field. So those, that's really the only modification there. And then what has been highlighted in orange, those are the pathway light poles that you can see, that there are five that go around the, the field. And so that's really to add uniform lighting for pathway for pedestrians to walk around the field if they so choose. And then on the north side, you'll see the rectangle in orange that there is for the batting cage, batting cage lighting. And again, the batting cage lighting, it is going to be on a timer that is controlled by the city for when it can be turned on, but then it's also only going to be turned on when a user goes into the batting cage to use it, which also has a timer again to reduce that. So it's not on all the time. And then again, it can be turned off by the city when they want to.
So once it was determined that there was a slight differentiation of light levels on the final design documents as compared to the EIR, staff retained consultants from LSA associates who previously prepared the EIR to determine if the minor modifications would require additional analysis or study. In their review, LSA concluded there were no substantial changes and no discovery of new information of substantial importance that would require further analysis or study. Furthermore, no subsequent or supplemental EIR or negative declaration is required prior to approval of the design, including the modifications that Hugh just mentioned. And that the, and that an addendum to the, that an addendum is the appropriate SEQA document in this project. LSA has prepared an addendum pursuant to SEQA guidelines in section 15162 and 15164, concluding, or following the meeting tonight. The prepared addendum will be posted on our city website with the project information, and no further action is necessary. So to conclude the action before you tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the field lighting at Highlands Park and to authorize a call for bids for construction. Other options to consider are either to not adopt a resolution or provide staff with alternate direction. And Hugh and I also are available for questions pertaining to Highlands Park at this time.
Okay, thank you, Amy and Hugh. Thanks, Hugh, for sticking around so long, waiting for this item. I appreciate it. Any questions from council on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will open it up to public comment on this item for Highlands Park lighting. Crystal, is there anyone waiting in the waiting room on Zoom?
There are no hands up right now.
Okay, do we have any members of the public here that have submitted a card? Oh, great. Come on up and introduce yourself, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Bob Balleier. I'm the co-president of San Carlos U softball. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate the lights going up at Stadium and also at Flanagan. It'll dramatically increase, increase our playing time and practice time. It'll be a huge benefit. And also switching the lights separately within the bullpen, it'll be just, I mean, it will really impact our program very positively. So thank you very much. Also, wanted to let you guys know that within our tournament that we have coming up, we get a lot of compliments from other teams and organizations of how beautiful the parks are that they have. We are rated number one within the tournament circuit, so I just wanted to let everybody know that, and thank you for all your work. And Amy, for everything that you do, and, and your staff as well. The parks are very beautiful, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. That's a very nice compliment to Amy and her team. Are we going to take this as a vote now, Crystal, so Adam can participate in that vote? Or would you like us to do a total vote at the end with everybody except Adam?
There's one resolution, so I think, I think as long as we differentiate that, that the vote is a separate vote, I think we're okay, and we'll just have to, we might have to divide it up later as, as two separate resolutions. But you can participate in this, in the, in a first vote on, on Stadium now, and then we will prepare separate resolutions.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion now for just this Highlands piece, Stadium Field.
So is it just saying the same thing over again? Twice, we're going to do that?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion then. No, I'm going to, no. Okay. I move to adopt resolution 2022 dash-
Forty-three.
A resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos approving the plans and specifications and authorizing a call for bids for the installation of new sports field lighting at Stadium Fields, project C 1818.
I'll second that.
Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes. Okay. So the vice mayor will recuse himself. Thank you, and we will move on to the second portion of Amy's presentation.
Hello again. So this is for Burton Park, planning a field at Burton Park. So this is, again, same as what we had before. We took your comments again, and two poles on the north side here are shown in a second. We had to move away from the U Center. The poles were located a little bit close to the foundation, so we had to move those for constructability. And then at this field, we also added the batting cage and the bullpen lighting here. So this is again showing phase one and phase two, and you can see the two poles on the plan north side, those circle in red, those are the ones that we pulled in a little bit closer to the field, just for constructability. And then on the right side, highlighted in yellow, we show three lights that were added for the bullpen lighting, and then in the batting cage, the orange rectangle that is showing the lighting that we added there. Again, the control for the bullpen and the batting cage lighting will be the same with control by the city on a, a timer system with the users having to turn it on when they want to use it and timed again for their use.
And we're happy to answer any questions you may have at Burton Park.
Okay, questions from council? I see none. So we will now move to public comment. Crystal, is anyone in the waiting room on Zoom?
Yes, we do have one hand. Scott, Odon? You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council. I am the San Carlos Little League Vice President, City Liaison. I've been coming to the city council meetings, Parks Commission meetings, to follow this project since it was initiated and very excited to see it move forward. So I just want to reiterate Little League's support and appreciate the, the support from the city. I agree with, with Bob. It's going to do a lot of wonders for all our U sports teams. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Crystal, any other hands?
No, there are no other hands.
Hey, anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it to council discussion. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember Collins.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you, Amy, but also thanks to all the staffs that have come before you in the last 33 years. This first came before the planning commission when I was on it, and that was way too long ago. So I've waited 33 years for this, and I'm very happy to see it go forward. I'm going to support it, so, quite obvious, I guess. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt resolution 2022 dash-
Forty-four.
Was that 14?
Forty-four.
144, sorry.
Just, just forty-four.
Just forty-four?
Yes.
Sorry. Masked, so. A resolution of the city council of the City of San Carlos approving the plans and specifications and authorizing a call for bids for the installation of new sports field lighting at Flanagan Field, project C 1818.
Any further comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rock has recused himself. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Can we call the vice mayor back? Thank you, Crystal. Can we call the vice mayor back? Okay, we've got the vice mayor. We'll move on to item 10, agenda setting. Do any members of council wish to place an item on a future agenda? Seeing none, I will now call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.